All right.[283.29][283.29](laughing)
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Locust Valley Board of Education work session. I'd like to begin the evening by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to just note the scrolling photographs that Dr. Sampino put together highlighting some wonderful things going on in our district. And I think I'm just going to pass it right over to you, Dr. Sampino.
Great. Good evening, everybody. I just want to pause a moment and remind our community that the safety and security of our students and staff is always our top priority. We are always revisiting our safety plans and looking at ways to make them better. We are in communication with our local police department, and we look to work with a partnership with our parents and community members to make our neighborhood stronger. I just wanted to say that to begin the meeting. I also want to express gratitude. I am very thankful to our amazing staff who have taken our students to the wonderful trip to Washington, D.C., all of our teachers, our parents. A special shout out to Mr. Leggerfo, Ms. Watson, and Mr. Nea. You do have my votes for Administrators of the Year. They told me that on the way back from the trip, and I'm sure if you see them, they'll tell you why. I also want to thank Mrs. Manicosi for organizing it. The students are going to have such wonderful memories and truly special, so I just wanted to take a moment and thank you all. I also wanted to thank Mrs. Ergen for setting up a beautiful bilingual night for our families and students and staff that attend. Thank you so much. I can go on and on and talk about the wonderful things that happen in the district all the time. Into the Woods, amazing, our film festival, the students inducted into the National Junior Honor Society. These moments truly put a smile on my face, and I thank you. So I just wanted to tell you all that. What also puts me a smile on my face is our students. And we're not honoring students tonight. Usually that really makes me excited when I look out and I see our smiling faces. But if I can't have students, the second best thing that puts a smile on our face is the administrative team. I also cannot take full credit for the beautiful slides putting up on the screen here. I want to thank Dr. Turner, Mrs. Bonasprilla, and our Tom Caranza for putting that together. We thank the community for continually supporting us, and we just wanted to highlight some really fun memories that happened. So here tonight are two of our fantastic administrative team, Mr. Kurt Simon and Ms. Allison Wasserman. Not only are they fantastic instructional leaders in their buildings, they are truly amazing go-to people for our ELA program and looking at students reading and writing and workshop that's happening in our classrooms, and they really are a fantastic resource. And they're just going to give us a little peek into what's going on in ELA in our elementarys K through five. So I'm good with, I happily introduce Mr. Simon and Ms. Watson, and thank you so much for coming.[495.00][495.00](applause)
So we just want to start by thanking the Board of Ed and Dr. Sampino for your continued support. Tonight's really an opportunity for us to share and celebrate the great work that's going on in our classrooms behind the support of our staff, and to highlight the authentic experiences that our students are having in the area of literacy. And students are reading, they're writing about topics that are meaningful to them, and I think we know that when it's relevant to all of us, our students are more engaged and they're motivated to produce good work. In addition, we're empowering them, our teachers are empowering them to be active in the learning process, which is so critical in this day and age. And part of what you'll hear tonight is the impact it also has on communication, whether they're speaking in front of the entire class, they're having dialogue in small groups, they're working in partnerships, their teachers are conferring with them. Part of this process really is about them speaking with one another to grow, and overall, I think it gives them a really strong voice in who they are and what's important to them.
So Kurt and I were fortunate enough to work on the profile of a graduate committee. So one of the big shifts in literacy is the addition to lifelong practices of readers and writers. And you'll see as we talk about a few of the bullet points how it really matches and aligns with work that we did on profile of a graduate. So I just wanted to pull out three bullet points from the lifelong practices of readers' side. So for instance, we're reading for multiple purposes, learning and pleasure. So we're interested in introducing students to various genres. We split it between nonfiction and fiction. Students, like Kurt was saying, have the opportunity to read independently, with partnerships, in book clubs, even as young as pre-K. They are reading in book clubs. It's amazing. Students bookshop for books that they're really interested in, in their classroom libraries, as well as the school libraries. So to add on to that, we also have students choosing texts based on their interests. We're studying topics of choice. Teachers have worked really hard to create book lists that we have ordered to include topics that inspire the children and help them pursue their passions. It's amazing to hear kindergartners, first, second graders, all the way up to fifth grade going, "I love this author. Do you know any other books that they wrote?" Or, "I love this series. Have you read a series that's like that?" So we're really trying to impart these lifelong practices of reading. And of course, we're teaching kids to persevere through challenging texts. So we're making sure that all students are exposed to grade-level texts. Some of that's going to be very hard for some of our students, but the teachers walk them through it and give them strategies to get through it. Students are also hearing read alouds every day, so we're lifting the level of their thinking, and we're giving them high-interest texts, but they're also challenging. So that's some of the reading work that we're working on that also matches and aligns to the profile of a graduate as well.
So the lifelong practices of writers is very similar where Allison left off. That idea of persevering really happens when they persevere through challenging writing tasks. These units take them several weeks in which they're brainstorming, they're drafting, they're revising, they're editing, they're elaborating, and their teachers are really working with them to stretch their writing, to say more. It's so important to continue to look as it's sort of an ongoing process. But it's also important that they're persevering and grappling through different genres, right? Even when you're reading, you want to push yourself to be exposed to different types of text at a young age, and we want them to be exposed to different types of writing as well. There are also, the second bullet is analyzing mentor texts to enhance their writing. And you think of our students who get excited to come up to a varsity game at Locust Valley High School or watching something on TV in sports. They're emulating those who they want to be like. We want them to emulate published authors as well. So part of the work that they do is to study these mentor texts. What are the moves that these authors are making? You know, how do they use a hook? How do they use descriptive language? How do they use dialogue in their work? And then it's really powerful to see our kids, after these many lessons, start to incorporate it into their own writing. And also, they're writing for multiple purposes, right? They're learning and for pleasure. And if we think about the different ways that we read as adults, if we're looking to, you know, maybe purchase a new car, we might be reading on the internet to see reviews. We might be checking out a magazine from the library. They're doing the same thing, but it goes back to, is it meaningful and relevant to them? So they may not be writing a review about a car, but they might be writing a review about a toy. Or the other day, I was in a first-grade classroom, a student was writing a review about a game because that was what was meaningful to this child at the time.
So we're going to walk you through what workshop looks like. So first, we gather the students together to teach a strategy explicitly. Teachers might model the work, explain it with an example, guide the students through inquiry, or work on a strategy together as a class. This allows the students to see the work that needs to be done, and it gives them an opportunity to try it with the teacher's support before they go off, and possibly work independently or in a book club or in a partnership or in a small group with a teacher. This is time for the teacher to think about data they've collected and informal assessments and really say, "What can I teach this child that they need?" And then, of course, we come back together for a share at the end where we think about, what did we work on? What did we learn today? This could also be another opportunity to try out another strategy as a whole class.
So we have a couple writing samples on the screen for you that really span K to five. And the thing that you'll notice is that students are generating both fiction and nonfiction topics of their choice. And again, they're going through that process, the process of drafting, the process of editing and revising, and ultimately publishing pieces. On the right, you see two pieces in which they're experts. Our students are experts on a lot of topics. The examples that we're showing you tonight are, in the middle is one student who wrote about the power of being an upstander, the power of being a friend and including others. On the right is a student who wrote about how much she loves LVI. Having been at LVI for three years, she knows a lot about the school, writing about the changes in the library. What's on screen is the auditorium that we're so proud of and the history behind it, the nurse's office. So there are a lot of topics that even at a young age, our students are experts in. On the bottom left of your screen, you see a student who's published but has created a vlog. So in this case, after going through that whole process, they recorded themselves using our Chromebooks, and then their peers were able to listen to that piece and then record feedback from them, which is really powerful. You know, we know that we have robust libraries in our school and our classrooms and our school libraries, but we also read eBooks. And so we've used apps such as Book Creator for our students to create their own eBooks. And as they're going through this process, they're continuing to self-assess, use checklists to be as independent as possible, and ultimately celebrate their work. I know Allison will talk a little bit about some of the work that we've teamed up with in our local community to celebrate the reading and writing work that we've done. But teachers are having publishing parties. They're inviting other classes in, they're inviting parents in, so that there's a sense of pride about their work. And when you walk the halls and you go into classrooms, you see teachers who are hanging this work up so that the audience is bigger than just their classroom for all to see and in the classroom as well. This is really an important part of the process because we want our students to be very proud of their work and be proud of the work that they've gone through along the way.
So we've talked about some great instruction, what's going on in our classrooms, but we are really proud that we celebrate literacy throughout the year, throughout our buildings. So we've done virtual author visits and in-person author visits. We can't thank our parent councils enough for helping us set those up for our kids. We have partnerships and book buddies from pre-K students all the way up through fifth grade students. We've had PARP celebrations, working with our parent council. We've had our high school students come down to the elementary schools to read to all of our classes multiple times. Last year, the athletic teams came down. This year, we were so excited to have the jesters read to our kids. And of course, we have our guest readers, again, pairing up with our parent councils, really a wonderful, a wonderful thing that we do in our schools, and the kids love to see community members coming into their classrooms to read. So we can't thank everyone enough for that. And we thank you all for letting us give you a little glimpse into our classrooms, and we put together a little video for you so you can really see what the kids are doing.
So again, we just want to thank the board and Dr. Sampino for your continued support as we continue to work with our teachers and get into the classrooms as much as we can to support their growth as readers and writers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was wonderful. And I'm very lucky. I get to go in firsthand and see all those wonderful things. And even when I miss something, Mrs. Wasserman always sends me a text that says, "This is going to make you smile," and it always does. It's children reading, writing, laughing, and it really is special. And I thank you so, so much. You did a wonderful job. Thank you. Does anybody from the board have any questions?
I have some questions, but first of all, what a beautiful presentation, and I can't thank you enough for just really bringing to life for people who don't get to get in the classroom, all of the hard work and really the excitement around reading and writing that you have done on both sides of the district in all four small buildings. It's really just unbelievable. I'd be remiss in, you know, not talking about PARP. I don't know who runs it on the Locust Valley side, but I know that Lauren runs it on the Babel side, and I think that the partnership with the parents and the community is just, it's just tremendous. When I was trained at Teachers College, the one thing that they just kept saying was, you know, "Read six times a day to the kids," or, you know, "Have five opportunities to write." And it just seems like our kids are getting that type of immersion, and that's really special. Being an old reading teacher, I have to ask, how are we doing on phonics? And is it coming back? Are we bringing it back in style? I like bringing old, I like 1988 coming back. That's my first question. You like that too, Mrs. Riley? Oh, yeah, yeah, all right. I got some claps in the audience. I can't impress upon, you know, just, and I don't know what's going on, so I'll let you answer, but phonics isn't just for remediation. Phonics is, for many children, the way to learn reading. And I just want to, you know, put the emphasis back, and it doesn't have to be dry and boring and dull. It can be kind of what you showed us here, exciting and involved. And my second question is, in fifth grade, I would think, probably maybe fourth grade in this district, are we working on annotating texts when the kids are moving into novels? You know, historical, nonfiction? Are we doing that kind of work in the higher end of the lower grades?
Absolutely to that. I mean, I do think there's a piece of, you know, that they're interacting. I think the question really is, how much are they interacting with their text? They're absolutely doing that and getting those experiences, and that's part of the work that our staff developers are coming in to support us in. I do want to just also speak to the piece that you mentioned in the very beginning just about PARP. Our parent council on the Locust Valley side definitely helps with that. And I think that was one of the things we were trying to draw out of the presentation is not just the units that we do, but also that it sort of spills throughout the district, whether it's connecting with the high school, whether it's whether older students reading to younger students, having our parents come in as readers and also help us celebrate. So you have, we have Authors' Day coming up. Our parent council's a huge part of that. Once again, learning from authors around the district. And the other piece with the foundations piece is, we do have, we actually just got a delivery of the foundation's kits. They did revise them, so they're going to be new kits for our teachers so that everybody can get either trained or retrained, speak the same language. And the plan is really to tackle the professional development this spring so that we can roll out the foundations in the fall.
Beautiful.
Instead of rolling it out, you know, and then getting the PD. So hopefully, that systematic approach will be beneficial for all.
Thank you. And I have to say, every one of the presentations since Dr. Sampino has been here, you guys keep beating each other, you keep raising the bar. So I think, who's next?
Ms. Farina.
Ms. Farina. So now, let's see what she, I mean, you brought the video, so we're going to, I don't know, you're up the bar. But thank you. Thank you for bringing that to life. Anybody else from the board? Come on, guys.[1574.51][1574.51](laughing)
I remember when I went to LV, Ann MacArthur, I think it was, third grade. I was Alice the waitress and went in there in a garb, and my daughter brought me the book.
Second grade.
What?[1588.86][1588.86](laughing) That was moment, that was pretty nice.[1594.01][1594.01](laughing) You talk about it still.[1598.36][1598.36](laughing) I've worn that at Halloween costumes, and it's still a big head. But I enjoyed that so much, and I still see the picture. It's amazing. And all the kids grab you and just want to be close to you. You know what I mean? It was great. And another year, I'll be doing it since I'm going to retire, so that'll be fun, too.
You're going to be our guest readers. We're going to get you in there, John.
Oh, I loved it.
Just want to say thank you for the presentation. I spent a lot of time in the elementary buildings, especially with our reading programs, and I just want to make note, the most exciting thing for me when I walk in the classrooms is we have so many physical books. Our kids have real books in their hands. They're putting a pencil and pen to paper quite often. I love seeing how you incorporated technology as an addition to an actual written piece of work, which was really exciting. It's a really nice way to see the use of technology enhance their actual writing as opposed to replace it. It was good to see a video of actual writing. And I just, I love that we're just filled to the brim. I mean, literally in some of the classrooms, I don't know where to go with all the books. And it's a really good problem to have, so thank you.
All right. I think we're going to move on to the, thank you very, very, very much. Thank you. We'll move on to the budget presentation, the fourth one.
Well, we can't have, we can't have things like that without our budget. So it is all connected.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Tonight is budget presentation number four. The remaining meetings involve the budget adoption by the board on April 18th and then the hearing and the vote on May 16th. Probably, there won't be any changes between now and the adoption. The state did not adopt their budget this weekend, and now that's been postponed till April 10th. So there potentially could be a change in our state aid numbers, but that's not one of the things that they're talking about that they may be revising. So most likely, the numbers that are here tonight will be the numbers that we present to the board for adoption on April 18th. The proposed tax levy increase that we're putting out is 2%. It is well below the maximum allowable. It is well below the maximum allowable tax levy increase according to the state formula, which for Locust Valley this year came to 2.61%. But everyone worked very hard collaboratively to try to just have any efficiencies where we could to bring the number down to 2%. This is the summary of the proposed expenditures and revenues. In our past two meetings, we went over in detail the top five lines of the expenditures. We went over in detail. Those presentations are available on the website. And now tonight, we're also adding the proposed revenues. And the majority of our revenue comes from the tax levy, which is the next to the last line on the bottom, that is the 2%. But we also have other items. We have students who are in our special ed program that come from other districts that pay us tuition. We have shared border property revenue with, if a property lies within two districts. The residents can elect to go to one district or another and then pay the district where they're attending school their share of taxes. So we have some of that. We pay to other districts as well, but we do get some revenue from that. The state aid, you can see increased from last year by half a million dollars, so that was very helpful. And our interest earnings, you can see an increase of over 1,000% based on the interest rates that rose from last year to this year. And we have other miscellaneous, we have 480,000 miscellaneous reimbursements. That number seems to work. It could be any types of reimbursements. It could be workers' comp recoveries, all various things, but that number has been constant, and it's held well for us. It's been a good estimate. And then our LIPA pilots, about three or four years ago, the county removed the LIPA properties, which are poles and wires and all that. They removed them from the tax rolls, and they pay that to us separately as a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. And so our non-property tax revenues comes to seven and a half million, and the remainder will come from the tax levy. The transfer to capital of 2,005,000 has a few very exciting things. A couple of years ago, the Bayville Primary Playground was redone, and now in this proposed transfer to capital, we will get new playgrounds at BI, AMP, and LVI. And in addition to that, we're going to do the middle school, high school girls locker room renovation, which has been talked about for several years, and we're including that in next year's capital projects. Proposition number one on the ballot will be approval of the budget. Proposition number two will be the establishment of a capital reserve. We talked about this the last few meetings. A capital reserve is set up as, with a time limit and a dollar limit, and the reserve accounts that we have opened in past years have expired. They reach the maximum allowance, so we need to open a new one. Should we have surplus revenues that we want to allocate to the capital reserve, we need a new account to do it because we don't have an open account now. So this doesn't involve any funds, there are no tax implications, it's just opening an account. That will be proposition number two. Finally, the calendar again, we'll adopt on the 18th. We'll have a public hearing, which is a required meeting as a summary, and then the vote on the 16th. Does anyone have any questions? Nope? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Tony.
You're welcome. Did we go over the dates? She's at the dates.
Thank you, Tony. And as I had said before, all the wonderful programs that we're maintaining, you know, Mrs. Farina's coming on the 18th to talk about a new math text, our wonderful reading and writing workshop that we're doing, all the work that we do in the schools, it was all part of our budget. And if you got to see any of the pictures, it really is a thank you to the community for supporting the schools, so thank you.
Susan, any public comment? No? Okay, we do have a consent agenda to vote on.
I have a motion.
Motion, Trustee Themis, second. Trustee Schaefer, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right, that concludes, oh, yes?
I want to talk about the Wall of Valor fast.
Oh, I thought we were putting on the next meeting.
Oh, sorry. We'll get it on the next one.
It's okay, okay. Yeah, so that is all for this evening. Thank you very much. Thank you again for your presentation. Tony, thank you. I'm sorry? Yes. Board of Education is going to be moving into the executive session. I need a motion for exec. Trustee Vasilio, second. Trustee Steele, thank you so much. Have a wonderful break, happy Passover, and happy Easter, and enjoy the time off. Thank you so much.